Hi, everybody. My name is Sue Ann Zollinger. I'm a lecturer at Manchester Metropolitan University in England. And I'm just going to talk today somewhat superficially or briefly about kind of how to get started in bioacoustics and how to start analyzing the sounds that you record in a way that is repeatable and avoid some of the most common mistakes and pitfalls or problems that you can run into during sound analysis. Since you're at this meeting, you're no doubt aware that many animals, including humans, really rely on sound to communicate and even to navigate through their environments in the case of echolocation. And our challenge as bioacquisitions is to kind of find ways to describe and compare and analyze these signals in a way that's not only biologically meaningful, but also repeatable and unbiased. It may seem obvious, but the first step to that is to have good recordings to begin with. And so I think a lot of early attempts at bioacoustics by newcomers to the field, that problems arise because it seems easy. You stick a microphone out and you record the sounds and then you can analyze them. And that that sounds like a pretty easy thing to do. And the trick is that not every recording you make is going to be suitable for every type of analysis. And so it's really important to start with understanding what kind of data you want, what kind of questions you're asking, and figuring out the best way to get those recordings that are going to allow you to do those analyses. And there's a lot to talk about here, and I don't have time to go into it all. But there are lots of good resources out there and also some kind of not great advice out there online. I would recommend having a good read through the Cornell of Ornithology's website. They have lots of great resources about how to get started with choosing equipment and knowing how to record the sounds you're interested in with a minimal amount of background noise and interference. Just kind of briefly, I won't go into any details about equipment, but I just want to talk about the types of recordings that you might do. There's lots of really cool products now out there that are kind of passive recording devices that you can put up on a tree somewhere or in the ocean somewhere that will kind of passively record all of the ambient noise around it. And those tools are really great for certain questions. So those tools are really great for kind of assessing biodiversity, monitoring long-term vocal behavior of species in the area, but they're less good at making targeted recordings of certain individuals. So if the question that you're asking, the question you're interested in, has to do with communication signals between individuals and knowing who's producing what sound, you're going to need to do something different. And that can be improved by thinking about the type of microphone that you use. So a typical cardioid microphone, like the one on the left here, kind of records from a broad area, so it has a very wide recording area, whereas a shotgun microphone is much more directional. So if you compare the patterns of where the microphone is recording, in this case, I don't know if you can see my cursor or not, but in this case, this microphone kind of records from the whole field in front of the microphone, whereas a shotgun microphone is much more directional. So it's only recording most of the energy, sound energy is coming from the front and a little bit from the back and very little from the sides. And so that allows you to kind of point your microphone at the target individual and get a larger signal, a bigger signal to noise ratio from that individual than from the sound that might be coming from other sources to the sides of the target individual. And you can even boost that more with a parabolic microphone, so having a parabola. And there's also, there's lots of cool tutorials online of how to make your own parabola, like out of a trash can lid or something. But that allows you not only to be very directional in your sound recording by pointing it at the focal individual, but also it amplifies the signal so that it even boosts that signal to noise ratio so that the target individual is going to be louder than all the other sounds in that environment. And then what do you do from the microphone? How do you record it? There's lots of options for making digital recordings these days. Like I said, this on the right is one of these passive sound recording devices where you could just stick it up in the environment and make long-term recordings of everything that's happening there. But you might also take one of your microphones and plug it into a digital recorder, such as this one on the left. You might think about how you're going to input the microphone there. So like a bigger, more stable microphone input, such as shown on the bottom of this recorder here, is going to give you less kind of noise from wiggling cables than you might get if you just have a microphone with a mini plug, you know, that's a little bit more sensitive to getting jostled around and bumped out of place. So these are the kind of decisions you need to think about in terms of getting equipment. And again, like I said, have a good look through some reliable sources online before you make decisions of spending money on things. But think about what you want, like what kind of recordings you need to answer your question. Another thing I'd really encourage you to try to do when you're making sound recordings is to measure the amplitude of the signal. And that's a little bit fussier to do than simply sticking, getting a microphone and recording the sounds. If you want to measure the amplitude, you're going to need something, either a sound level meter, which can range from not super expensive to extremely expensive, or a calibration microphone. I wouldn't rely on cellphone apps, there's lots of them now, but the microphones in cellphones are not really up to the task to be making good reliable sound level meters. And it's hard to calibrate these and have them make reliable measurements of how loud sounds are. Also critical to kind of understanding the amplitude of the signals that are being produced by your animal is to measure the distance and the direction of the animal. So if it's facing you or facing away, and how far away it is. And you can do that, you know, easily with the old school technology, just kind of calculating it based on the distance you are from the perch, for example. If you're recording a bird who is at the top of this tree, you could use trigonometry to, or geometry to figure out, I mean, to figure out where that animal is. If you have access to a laser rangefinder like this one on the left, that makes measuring the distance to the sound source very easy. But we'll talk more later in the talk about how to use this distance to calculate source amplitude. So now you've got your microphone, you've got your recorder, and you want to go out and record some animals. And the next thing to think about is that that signal that the animal is producing is an analog signal, which means it's a continuous function of time. The digitization happens by taking discrete data points at some interval to create that data signal. And that's the first decision you need to make when you're setting up your recording. So say you're recording this sound that's illustrated here in red, and it's a sine wave. And if you took digital samples at the times indicated by these green arrows, for example, you'd end up with data points like these black data points. And if you just put those data points into your computer program that's going to either convert it to a sound and play it back to you out of a loudspeaker or to do analysis on, if the computer just gets this, not these discrete points, it's not going to necessarily know that it should draw this red wave. It's going to look for the simplest way to connect these into a continuous sound wave. And in the case of these black points, it might be this blue line, right, which is a much lower frequency than the one that your animal or you tried to record. So because of this, in order to accurately capture the true frequency of the sounds you're recording, you need to set your sample rate at least twice what you would expect the highest frequency of your target should be. So for humans, we only hear up to about 20 kilohertz. And so most recordings that are made for humans to listen to are sampled at about twice that rate. So that makes sense for stuff that humans are going to listen to. But if your animal produces sounds that are higher than we can hear, for example, you're recording a bat or dolphins that are using ultrasound, you're going to need a sampling rate that's twice what you expect that animal to produce. So if your animal's producing sounds that are at 40 kilohertz, you're going to need to record with a sampling rate of at least 80, right? Conversely, if you're confident your animal is only producing very low frequency sounds, say your animal never produces any sound higher than 2 kilohertz, then recording at 44 kilohertz maybe is overkill and maybe just a waste of your hard drive space. So you need to think about what your predictions are. And if you don't know, you might have to err on the side of caution. So then, now we have this digital signal, and what do we do from it? My face out of the way. So what are we going to do with it? How do we extract the information we want from this series of data points? In an extremely simple situation, you have a sine wave, and that that sine wave would be a regular, repeating, periodic waveform that doesn't change either in amplitude or frequency, like in this example here. And there's things we could measure just directly from this waveform. So if we look at these data points that make this wave, we could measure, for example, the amplitude, so how high this deviates from zero, both positive and negative. So that's the peak-to-peak amplitude. We might take a root mean square average to kind of understand the average frequency here. We'll talk a little bit about how to do that later. And we often, rather than looking at absolute values of amplitude, we kind of compare it to some reference sound, for example, the limit of human hearing or so. And remember that decibel, even though we often colloquially talk about it as if it's a unit in itself, it's really measuring a ratio. And so if you just say, I measured the sound and it was 20 decibel, it doesn't mean anything. It's 20 decibel relative to something. The other thing you could easily measure from a pure sine wave is frequency. So you can just look at this count, how many of these peaks happen in some, in a second, for example, and how many cycles per second will tell you something about the fundamental frequency of this signal. You could illustrate both of those things, the amplitude and the frequency of this signal graphically, by producing a spectra. So a spectrum of this, a spectrum of this sound would look something like this. There's frequency here at F, so we'd measure that by, like I said, counting the peaks per second, and it's at an amplitude, you know, of Y. And since we only have, we have no change in the amplitude and we have no change in the frequency, it's quite a simple spectrum, right? It graphs this just as a single peak. But the likelihood that any recording you make of any animal in the real world, or any sound in the real world, is going to be a pure sine wave is extremely small. So we need to think about how we can describe more complex and more realistic types of waves. Most likely, you will have sounds that are both frequency and amplitude modulated. And here, we rely on our old buddy Fourier. So this Fourier was a mathematician who came up with a way to kind of interpret complex waveforms and extract from them which, how, what sine waves, what pure sine waves could be added together to make up that signal. It's taking this kind of complex sound and saying, okay, here, we have this one big signal, and that has contributed a lot to this, but it's also, since it's not a pure sine wave, because it's in this kind of square shape, you could dissect out the relative contribution of each of these signals and plot it. So here we have, like our graph in the last figure, kind of which frequencies make up this signal and how much they contribute to the overall amplitude of this signal. So basically, the Fourier transform goes along and breaks up your wave into smaller windows or chunks. And you tell your software how big you want that chunk to be, how many data points are going to go in that window. And it computes from that subsection, all the sine waves that make up that waveform inside that window. That algorithm works best if these chunks, if these windows are a power of two. So you often see in your sound analysis program that you can pick an FFT size, so that means a fast Fourier transform. And that FFT size is going to be something that's a multiple, a power of two, so 256 points or 512 points. And that's why these weird, where these weird numbers come from, has to do with this Fourier algorithm. And so it also, you might also run into questions when you're setting up your analysis software about that window. So remember that it's going to go along your long waveform and analyze small chunks or windows of that, of that signal. And the shape and the size of that window is going to influence how accurately the Fourier transform can interpret what frequencies go into that, that chunk, that window. So if, for example, you have a nice smooth sine wave and you only take a small window, and so this middle part is a nice sine wave, but when you get to the ends here, you see that it just kind of abruptly truncates. But the Fourier analysis is still going to try to interpret these abrupt endings as into sine waves. And so it's going to come up with kind of spurious frequencies to fill in that, you know, to kind of reconstruct and make sense of those incomplete parts of the, of the sine wave. And so you get this kind of spattering at the ends. And that's why you get the option of changing the window shape. So if you just have a rectangular window shape, you're going to have really abrupt endings. And if they don't correspond with like kind of natural ends of that waveform, as in the case of this signal, you have this waveform kind of getting, this cycle getting chopped in half. But if you make the window kind of tapered shape on the ends, that the relative contribution of these spurious frequencies that the Fourier transform is going to interpret here are going to be small. So that windowed signal is going to minimize these weird parts and maximize the parts that are periodic, right? So most sound analysis software that you would use comes with kind of preloaded window shapes. And they're slightly different in how, in what shape they are, but usually they're all tapered, except for rectangular, right? So these hand, hamming, Blackman, Bartlett, they're different filter shapes for your window. And the point of them is to try to minimize that kind of spectral leakage, so minimizing that, that spurious frequencies from the FFT process. So the next question you're going to have is, is kind of the window overlap. So remember that this window is moving along that, that long sound you recorded and interpreting what's inside that window and outputting it to the FFT, through the FFT to tell you what is the frequency content within that window. And if you taper the ends, but you didn't have any overlap at all, then you'd have this, this strange output that made it look like your sound is, is getting loud and getting quiet and getting loud and getting quiet, right? Because you're windowing your signal. So by overlapping these, you get rid of that. And this is related, the same thing, to why clipping is a problem. So when your signal's too loud, so when you're setting up your recorder, and if you see sometimes that the, a really loud noise comes and it overloads the recorder, all the lights turn red, you see the, the needle go off the chart. What's happening there when your signal's too loud and overloads the microphone, it can't record those natural peaks in the wave. And the result is a clipped signal. So in this case, where it goes outside of the range for the microphone, it just kind of flatlines here, and the output digitally will be data points here when they should be here. And so what goes into the analysis program then with clipped files is something that looks more like a square wave. And if you remember how the interpretation of that square wave was from the little animation we looked at a few slides ago, rather than interpreting this as a nice sine wave with one frequency as it really was when it was produced by the animal, we're instead going to get all of these spurious frequencies that the Fourier transform kind of comes up with to interpret this clipped or flat wave, and will make it kind of useless for being able to do real sound analysis from. Okay, so the window length or the window duration also matters. And that has to do with a similar kind of idea that, that when your FFT analyzer only has a short time or a short window to kind of calculate what the frequency components are there, it has a lot more relative contribution of the true periodic signal that you're measuring plus these spurious frequencies that it calculates where you chop that window. But the longer you give it to, so the longer duration window will give it more repeats of that periodic pattern, and it can be more confident in its output of what the true frequencies are. So in these examples here, these are power spectra made from the same exact, the same exact sound. And in this case, we use a window length that's almost a whole second long. So here we have a, we use the FFT size of about 33,000 points. And here we use a FFT size of only about 1,024 points. And you can see that although these, the true signal contains exactly the same thing, one sine wave at one kilohertz, that the confidence of the output of this FFT is much higher when you have a very long window length. But when we start to look at spectrograms in a second, we'll see how there's a trade-off between measuring really accurately the frequency and measuring really accurately the time. And so often, we try to balance these two. And so you may have a little bit of output in order to get better time resolution, where you're a little bit less confident in exactly what frequency content exists in that, in that signal, existed in that original analog signal. So now we are talking, we've talked about how you can kind of measure frequency and amplitude from these signals, but what about time? So we have these kind of time, these signals that often change over time with animal vocalizations. And this video I really like, I hope it will play here. It's kind of showing along this axis, a power spectrum of this, of this sound. And it will start rolling out as the sound plays. So you can see that it's just calculating, one right after the other, rapidly calculating a spectrum from each kind of slice in time. And this is how spectrograms are made. And this is just kind of a graphic illustration of kind of what you see in a two-dimensional spectrogram made into a 3D movie. Okay, here we come out of the PowerPoint, so I can play this, this little movie. You can see how there's peaks at these different frequencies, which kind of correspond with, with the sounds you're hearing. So here we're hearing like a wideband noisy signal, and you can see that there's high sound energy along these, all these frequencies and less in the higher frequencies. If you're an old person like me, you surely recognize this sound from the old days of the internet. But it's just, just an example, a kind of illustration to kind of help you understand how many power spectra go together to make up a spectrogram. So here's an example of the spectrogram of that sound we just listened to. So these initial tones and the jittering back and forth of the dial tone type of sounds. And then here's where we paused it in the middle of this broadband signal. And the way spectrograms are able to display these complex sounds is by kind of giving us three axes in two-dimensional, in a two-dimensional figure. So we have time now, instead of frequency, along this axis like we had with the power spectrum. We had the frequency here, but now we move the frequency out to the Y-axis. And you, and the spectrograms use color, or how dark, if it's only in a grayscale, to indicate the amplitude. So now the amplitude from that video we just watched is squished down instead of being three-dimensional as it was in that video, and it changed into a color coding to show us how loud those different signals are. And while spectrograms now, because of this ability to show us these three things at once, they're really great tools for visualizing complex sounds that change over time and change over frequency, like this bird song that we're showing here in a kind of a grayscale at the bottom here. But they also have some drawbacks when it comes to accurately measuring these parameters. And that's what I want to talk about here in the second half of the talk. So with kind of the proper choice of how you set your analysis parameters, spectrograms are really good tools for kind of comparing the time, frequency, amplitude data as a big picture. They're really good at giving you a graphical depiction that allows you to quickly look at a sound without having to listen to the whole thing and say like, oh yeah, that goes in this category, that goes in this category. And someone who's never heard that sound could kind of, with experience, understand what that sound is going to be like just from looking at the spectrogram. What they're not good at is as a way to measure accurately time or frequency and, or to make accurate amplitude measurements. And I put an asterisk there because there are ways to kind of calibrate your spectrograms and allow you to do those things, but the kind of normal way that people open spectrograms and in sound analysis programs is kind of rife with potential for error there. And that has to do with all of these things that we've just been talking about in great detail, about how sound is converted from analog to digital, and then how it's depicted in these successive spectra that make up a spectrogram. And so if we think about how spectrographic displays are built, they're made up, like you saw in this video, from a series of spectral slices. That's these analysis windows that we just made in the Fourier, with the Fourier transform. And, and then kind of put together in a grid with a color coding that gives you information about the amplitude. So if you think of this spectrum where we have the frequency and the amplitude, like the highest amplitude parts of this are the warmest colors, so we get red at the very peak here, and where there's almost no sound energy, where the amplitude or the loudness is very low, we get these cool colors. And so for each little window, the spectrogram calculates this kind of, this kind of display, like a little graphical series of pixels that tell you like kind of the information that exists in the spectrum compressed down into this color-coded row of pixels. And then stacks these all together over time. So now we include time by adding a bunch of these spectra one after the other. So kind of remember how, how it depended on the frequency that you choose, I mean, the FFT size that you I mean, the FFT size that you choose, how accurate that frequency is. So in this case, if this signal was actually, you know, one smaller peak at four and one larger peak around five, but because of the analysis window size, we have kind of wider bands than what the analog signal looked like. We're going to get a little more spread here, right? So we don't have just a tight peak in one little pixel of red, but we have this kind of smear. And, and that's the kind of information that leads to the sort of measurement errors you can get from just visually measuring frequency from spectrograms. So if you think about what the analog signal of this sound was, so this is actually a sound that I just generated in, in digitally and then played back from a loudspeaker and recorded from across, you know, from across the room. So all of this kind of information about is just echo and reverb. And what the actual signal I generated was, was a pure, a sine wave that was modulating in frequency, right? So that there was just a very, so all of this kind of smear that we see comes from the error that we get from the size of the FFT for generating the spectrogram and also the reverb and reflection from the acoustics of the room. So I mentioned a couple of times now that there's trade offs between frequency and time. And you can see that in this example here. So here's just the same bird song that's plotted with a 512 point Fourier transform. And here 2048. And if you look especially at these kind of short repeating trill like things at the end, in one case, right, you have very clear time resolution. You can see these discrete pulses of this little buzz at the end. And here these look instead rather like horizontal bars, right? So you have a lot more smear in the time domain this direction, where you have more smear in the frequency domain. And this is just a zoom in of a similar kind of situation. So here again is a synthetic signal that I generated. It's just a pure 1 kilohertz frequency sine wave, a tone. It doesn't change in amplitude once this initial on ramp. What you can see here is that, so here's the waveform of that sound that the beginning of the spectrogram, here's a zoom in of the spectrogram, is very close in time to where the sound actually, where the sound actually starts. But if you came in here and measured like the bandwidth, like how, what's the frequency range of this signal? If you didn't know that it was just a 1 kilohertz frequency, pure sine wave, you might say like, okay, here's the maximum frequency, here's the minimum frequency. You'd have to eyeball it a little bit because look, there's a little bit more gray. So you might even go farther out. So if you kind of conservatively say like, okay, here's my sound here, you might say, you know, this is a sound that's, you know, more than 500 hertz bandwidth. And, and that's, remember back to our power spectrum, has to do with how we draw that spectrogram. If we choose to draw our spectrogram using a really high FFT size, so remember again that we had the, if we used the FFT size that was really large, like almost as large as our sample rate, that we get very high frequency resolution. And you can see that here in the spectrogram. So we're comparing to this spectrogram. This is the same sound, right? Just plotted in two different ways in the spectrograms. That, that here we see really that there's just frequency energy at 1 kilohertz. So here we get very accurate depiction of what our original sound looks like. But look how bad our time resolution is, right? So we get almost 200 millisecond delay or uncertainty or error here in measuring, in measuring time. So this would be a terrible setting to use in your spectrogram. What you care about is time resolution. And imagine if this signal changed a lot in frequency. So if it was, you know, jumping up and down like that dial tone, that you wouldn't know where one sound started and where the next one began because you'd have so much error in the time resolution. So the other thing that can kind of be a big source of error is the way that spectrograms scale the relative amplitude in these, in these signals. So when, when you just have, if you open a spectrogram and it has more than one signal in it and they vary in amplitude like here. So here's again this computer generated sweep. So we know that the frequency content in all of these sweeps is the same. But because they vary very differently in, they vary quite widely in how loud they are. So here's the waveform, this one's quite loud and this one's quite quiet. If we plot them all together, the spectrogram scales this in a way that it's showing us differences in amplitude. And by doing that, we lose some of the ability to visualize the quietest parts of the quietest syllable. So again, we might measure, if we were just measuring these by eye, we didn't know they were the same. We might say that this one is got less, a lower bandwidth, right? So we'd say like the minimum frequency of this guy is about 3,400, whereas the minimum frequency of this guy is about 3,100. But in fact, they're exactly the same. And it's just because of the scaling of these sweeps in, by plotting them together in the spectrogram that you get this uncertainty. The other thing is that the, is related to the same topic, right? So it's going to scale the loudest sound in that spectrogram as kind of the darkest color in your, in your spectrum. So if you're trying to measure these frequencies from spectrograms in no background noise, you might measure, okay, here's the minimum frequency here, here's the minimum frequency here. But if there's a strong background noise, you get the complication of this masking, right? So here it's a lot less clear where the ending of it is. Is it here? Is it here? It's because of this overlapping of this noise. So you get kind of a complex problem of both masking and spectrogram scaling that makes it hard to measure the true amplitude. And that's true even if that other noise source doesn't overlap at all. So we don't have a problem with masking here, but it's still rescaling this spectrum based on this loudest signal. And we're getting a difference in how these minima and maxima look in the spectrogram. And of course, like if your whole signal is kind of swallowed, getting swallowed up in the noise, you're going to have this problem of masking where you aren't going to be able to get at the measurements that you're interested in if, if your background noise is just too loud. So these are just to kind of illustrate some of these problems you run into and why you need to come up with, you know, good repeatable ways. And the last thing I would leave you with in this, in this topic is that, that we also have to consider that we have these unconscious observer biases. So that if the person who's scoring these spectrograms visually on, for frequency content or time duration, if they have a preexisting hypothesis in their head that they inadvertently or unconsciously will, will scale, kind of score these spectrograms differently than someone who's blind to the methodology or to the hypotheses. And so we did a test of this and found that this was true. So we, we had 54 volunteers and they were all blind to the true purpose of our study, which was to see if they, if this unconscious observer bias would, would interfere with accurate measurements of spectrograms. But half of them were told that what they were doing was helping with us, us with a study that predicted that birds would sing higher frequencies if the songs were in noise. And half of the volunteers were not informed of a priori hypothesis. So they were just told, you know, look at these spectrograms and tell us, and tell us which, what the minimum and maximum frequencies are. What we found was that when there was no background noise, that both the informed and uninformed volunteers made kind of few errors in being able to measure minimum frequency. So they were able to kind of get pretty close to the accurate minimum frequency of those sounds we presented them when there wasn't any background noise, doing it visually with cursors from spectrograms. But when you start to include background noise, both of them did worse at this. So they start to get an error. So they were off by about 200, if they were blind to the study, but they were off by, so they made errors of about 150 to 200 hertz because of this background noise. So that their ability to accurately measure with, from spectrograms, what the frequency was, was worse when there's background noise. But if they thought that the, if they were informed that what we thought was that birds would sing higher in noise, they scored those minimum frequencies even higher. So it increased the error size basically to have people who were not blind to the study purpose, scoring those. And it really, it really kind of emphasizes how important it is to have a repeatable and unbiased way to make your measurements. And, and so that's why we like this method. So even though in this case, because some of your, some of the recordings here, like this guy are too close to the noise to really measure potentially what was the true minimum frequency and maximum frequency here, we can't, what we can do is find a repeatable way to do it without any observer bias by using these automated measurements where we take this bandwidth from the peak frequency and, and kind of let the computer do it. Who does, that doesn't have any preexisting idea of what direction they expect the effect to go. Okay, finally, a short little tutorial on measuring amplitude. So there's different ways. So most signals, sound file, sound sources vary a lot in amplitude over time. So this is a waveform of, of animal vocalization. And so how would you, how would you measure the amplitude here? How loud would you say? One, one possibility is to say, here's what the peak amplitude is of this whole vocalization. So you can see that you say, okay, the loudest he gets is right here. In that case, in that, that's interesting and useful in some cases. And in other cases, it might not be a great comparison where you might have a kind of spurious peaks that occur but aren't a good indication of what, how loud that vocalization is in general over time. You could do a peak to peak, which is quite similar. It's looking at the minimum and maximum of amplitude. And this is something that are often commonly measured in SPL meters or sound pressure level meters. But if you wanted to kind of get an overview of what this looks like, because, because the amplitude oscillates above and below zero, you can't just take an average amplitude because the average of this will be zero, right? So it's going to, the negative and positive parts of this waveform would cancel each other out. And that's how we have come up with this idea of a root mean squared. And so that's to kind of sample the waveform at many successive points and calculate the difference between the pressure at each point. And, and that allows us to kind of get like an idea of the average amplitude here using the square root of the sum of these differences in, in, in pressure levels across the waveform. But remember that you need a reference amplitude. And you also need to pay attention to how your sound pressure level meter makes the measurements of your sound. So some of them use different weightings that are based on human hearing, like A weighting or C weighting. And then to understand how loud the signal is at the source, you also need to correct for the distance from that source, from your animal to the microphone. And the way you do that here is to kind of convert for the distance. So you take, you know, the level that you measured, right? So that's the level at the distance that you're at. So if you're 10 meters away from the animal, you'd say, how loud is that animal that I measured at the 10 meters away? And, and you can kind of correct for distance there with six log and that 10 meter distance. And that will give you the source level at one meter. And then you also need to find a way to calculate how loud your amplitude was relative to the background noise. So if there is some kind of background noise, and there always is when you're outside doing some recordings, you need to measure how loud that background noise is when the animal is not vocalizing and subtract that, again, using this kind of logarithmic equation. Okay, so just to summarize, the best ways to maximize the output of your bioacoustic analysis is to start with trying to make the best recordings you can make. And that what is the best has a lot to do with what you want to know about it. Do you want to just know that animal is there? Or do you want to know how fast it sings? Do you want to know repetition rates? Do you care about time measurements? Do you care about frequency content or frequency changes in frequency patterns? So each of these different questions might want you to use different settings on your recorder and also in your analysis. So your research question should really instruct the methods. So think about before you go out and stick the microphone out and set up all your recording, what do you want from this? What do you want to know? And is this recording going to let me answer that question? And I really encourage you to make good notes of everything. You can do that with your voice at the end of your recording if you don't want to carry out, you know, a little notepad. But the distance to the animal, the background noise levels, the noise sources, what, what are the noise coming from? And, and finally, if you're going to score sounds, try to do them blindly or find automated ways to make these measurements that will be free from observer bias or have more than one person do those measurements. So you at least have some sort of verification of the sound, of the scoring that you're doing on those sounds. And I look forward to trying to answer some of your questions in the Q and A. Thanks very much.
Hi, my name is Jamie McCauley. I'm a postdoctoral researcher at Argus University. And I'm going to be talking about why is Pam so hard? And I hope that by the end of the talk, you will understand a little bit about this weird looking title slide. So just to get everyone on the same wavelength, I'm going to be talking about passive acoustic monitoring in the marine environment, but it also is very much used in the terrestrial environment too. But in the marine environment, after the first tens of meters of the water column, the sea is a really deep and dark place. And so animals have evolved to use sound, which travels much further and faster in water as one of their primary sensory modes. So for example, dolphins, they produce echolocation clicks. These bounce off prey and they can listen for the returning echoes to hunt and also to sense their surroundings. They also produce these very complex tonal vocalizations to communicate. And what we as researchers can do is simply listen. So we can just listen for those signs and then we can use the, the data we collect for a variety of purposes. And this is what passive acoustic monitoring is. So what can we do with these recordings that we collect? Well, actually, there's a huge amount. We can look at population densities by surveying using passive acoustic monitoring. So by towing an array behind a boat or putting lots of recording devices over a large area, for example. We can look at the energetics of animals, how often they're foraging by listening for telltale signs such as buzzing, which are really rapid clicks. We can look at anthropogenic effects such as noise. How, how, how much are ship, how much is shipping affecting animals, for example? We can look at acoustic behavior. Sort of dolphins produce signature whistles, for example, which are, which we can, which we can record using passive acoustic monitoring. We can in real time detect animals, which is useful for things like mitigation, to try and prevent animals from being exposed to very loud sounds. We can use passive acoustic monitoring for localizing the position of animals underwater, tracking their dives, seeing how deep they're diving, where they might be foraging. And we can use it for direct conservation applications such as listening to legal fish bombing blasts or in the Or in the terrestrial environment, perhaps gunshots. So what happens generally during a passive acoustic survey? Is that we end up with a huge amount of data. So let's think about a survey where we put fifty recorders out and we record for a year. That's fifty years of data. And a human going through that is just not feasible. So what we require are automated algorithms to extract the sounds of interest. Um and you might think, okay, well, I've got the smartphone in my pocket and I say, hey, Google or hey, Siri. And um it's pretty good at picking that up and pretty good at figuring out what I'm saying. So surely we can use that technology um to easily extract, say dolphin whistles or um right whale calls. So what I'm going to talk about um in the next few slides is why that is quite difficult, actually. Why that problem is not simple in passive acoustic monitoring. And um the what I'm gonna do that is I'm gonna bring you through an example. And the example is a scenario involving a harbor porpoise, which is the animal that I study um the most. And this is a small um cetacean. It's prevalent in northern European and American waters. And it produces echolocation clicks. So it uh it actually only produces echolocation clicks. It's not like a dolphin and has and also produces tonal voc vocalizations. And these clicks are very, very high frequency. They are six times above human hearing range. Um and they exist in a part of the um spectrum where there's nothing much else. And they're also very highly stereotyped. So this is an animal which has a unique sign, which should be easy to build automated algorithms for. And the scenario that I'm going to consider is a tidal turbine. So tidal turbines are they are underwater, they're like underwater wind turbines. Um and they use the current to make a blade rotate generally and they generate power. And these are being deployed in um in Scotland and Canada and other areas around the world. And it's they're they're designed to produce clean renewable energy. But there is a concern that um dolphins or porpoises or other marine mammals may collide with the blades. And that could cause catastrophic injury and death. Um and so there was a project to to look at one of the first um deployed turbines. And see whether harbor porpoises were entering a danger zone near the blades. Um because Scottish waters are very turbid, um that the uh the the. Pam monitoring was a very good solution. And so they instrumented up a tidal turbine with twelve hydrophones. And use the time delays in a porpoise click or a dolphin click arriving at different hydrophones. To calculate the location of an animal. And just as a slight digression, here is a picture of that tidal turbine going into the water. So we're gonna use the tidal turbine as a scenario to consider, to to try and emphasize why passive acoustic monitoring is not straightforward. So um here's the scenario. It's a porpoise. It comes towards the tidal turbine. So this is on the left graph here and this is a top-down view. It and each one of these dots is a porpoise click. So this is the click it's produced and that click has been localized to a position. The clicks are colored by amplitude. So as the porpoise gets closer to the turbine, the amplitude increases, it gets more red. And then as it swims away from the turbine, the amplitude reduces. On the right-hand graph, we have the received passive acoustic data uh on one hydrophone. So the top graph here is a amplitude time graph. And you can see that the amplitude of the clicks, each one of these these lines is a is a click. The amplitude of the clicks increases. And then decreases as the porpoise leaves. So this is where the porpoise is closest. The middle here is where the porpoise is closest to the turbine. And then we have a row of example clicks, which correspond to these little orange dots. And we have the corresponding spectra of each of these clicks. So this is a beautiful, clean Pam signal. And each of these are are great, high amplitude porpoise signals. Perfect um perfect for an automated classifier. And so what so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna implement a very, very basic automated classifier. And this, all this classifier does is say, if I detect any sign which is above a signal threshold, here it's a hundred and ten dB. Then I'm gonna say that that is a porpoise click. So very, very, very simple um automated classifier. Um and it's worth mentioning that before we go into this um scenario further and begin to add some complexity. That if we were doing a project like this, we would need to record using very specialist hardware. Because porpoises click at a hundred and thirty kilohertz. So you need to sample really at least three hundred kilohertz. That's three hundred thousand samples of a pressure waveform per second. So if you were to have twelve have twelve hydrophones, and usually we sample at half a million, actually, samples per second. Um then yeah, that is six million data points per second, which is a huge amount of data. And you need very specialist hardware um to do that. So this has only really become possible um practically possible uh recently with devices. Um such as uh National Instruments Cereal and Soundtraps. And that can that can sample at these large rates and record record these vast quantities of data. So. So the scenario that I showed you before is very, very unrealistic. Um in reality, porpoises live in a complex environment with a complex soundscape. So this graph here at the top right is a long-term spectral average of a tidal stream. Um and the little faint faint section just at the start is our porpoise clicks. And you can see that they are they are eclipsed by the by these big noise bands here. Which is due to sediment in the tidal stream and fast-moving currents. And the green line shows the maximum detection range that you might detect a porpoise. So what we're gonna do in our simulation is we're going to add in some noise. Um so if you look at the the top right graph, you can see that there's now some noise. And some of that noise has passed the threshold of our automated detector. So that's been detected as false positives. Those false positives have been localized and they've produced a little bit of scatter in the graph on the left here. Um but really, this system is still working really well. We could add a very simplistic um extra stage in our automated classifier. That said, maybe if it looks like a porpoise click, then it's a porpoise click. Otherwise, remove it. The noise will have a different spectrum and a different waveform. Um and we could probably get that beautiful porpoise track back. Um. Right. So whilst porpoises live in a complex soundscape, they also live, they also are physiologically complex. They are actually, they don't produce sound as a spherically propagating pulse. It's produced in a narrow beam profile, which is more like a flashlight. And that has two effects on Pam data. So the first is that the received amplitude is going to be very dependent on the orientation of the animal. So if the animal is facing towards you, then you're gonna get the highest received level. But if it's facing away, then you're gonna get a much, much lower received level. The second problem uh in passive acoustic monitoring is that the waveforms and the spectra are dependent on angle. So an on-axis waveform will look different to, say, a waveform that is produced at fifty degrees to the animal. And in porpoises, what happens is you get notches in the notches in the spectrum. And the waveform goes from a sort of nice geysian shape on axis to when it's very off-axis, it's got a sort of double double hump structure. So now if we look at our Pam data, we can see that as the porpoise approaches the turbine, it's facing the turbine. The 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 data is still okay. You get sort of high received levels, but because the porpoise isn't exactly on axis, those received levels are much reduced compared to. What they were in the previous example. And then as the porpoise moves away from the turbine, the beam profile, you can see here at the top right, this is a porpoise beam profile. Um that 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 is much the uh received level is much reduced and has now fallen below our threshold of our automated classifier. So we can no longer track the porpoise there. And then looking at the waveforms, you can now see that because the received level is much lower, there's more noise in the waveform. So the signal to noise ratio um has become a lot lower. That noise is now in the spectra and there are different wave, there are the waveforms are now different. So we have, we have longer waveforms, we have this double hump structure here, and we have not notches in the spectra. So just by considering the fact that a porpoise is not a uniformly spherically propagating pulse and has this beam profile. We've introduced a lot of complexity into the data. And the noise that we introduced in the previous step has has meant that we now have um artifacts in the spectra. Um and so our automated classifier is beginning to struggle, but we've still got quite a nice track here. Okay, so the last thing that I'm gonna consider in our scenario here is behavior. So so far, we've assumed that the porpoise is a torpedo going through the water in a straight line towards the turbine and then moving away. But porpoises are not torpedoes. They're they're they scan, they look for things. They are not going to be swimming in a straight line. Um they're gonna be going up and down, they might be foraging, making very quick movements. And this means that they the consistency in the received levels that we should that we've sort of had in all the previous examples. It is not correct. Um the animal is gonna be scanning this way and this way, and you're gonna be getting sort of a ra- much more ragged received level structure. So in our scenario, you can see that here in the graph, we now have received that we now don't have a smooth. Um increasing and decreasing received levels. We've got this sort of ragged structure as the as the animal scans. And that means that the signal to noise ratio for many of the clicks is further reduced. So in some of these clicks, we're we can really now hardly see um the porpoise, the porpoise signal at all. Um and localization is dependent on the signal to noise ratio. So if you have a low signal to noise ratio, localizing the position of an animal using a hydrophone array is going to um. It be more error prone, so there's gonna be more error in the position. And you can see that here in our path. We've now lost a few of the clicks because the animal has been scanning. And the clicks that we have localized have more scatter, more error. So we've gone from this really beautiful path of a simulated porpoise to a much more ragged path. And we've lost a lot of positions. And that is what we see actually in this study. Uh we see that it is it is difficult to localize these clicks. And to get get a really nice path of porpoises as they as they track the turbine. Uh or as they as they move around the turbine. So just by adding some basic things in a simulation. And then we have in this simulation, we have not introduced the full level of complexity from these environments and from these animals. But just by adding a few realistic uh pieces of information, we've gone from a really nice path. To this. So. I was considering a harbor porpoise there um and but they are just one species. Every species has its different challenges. And. Generally, though, why is Pam so hard when it comes to passive, when it when it comes to automated classification? It's because we're dealing with really complex animals in a very complex environment. And so there is a huge amount of variation in the received data. And that's why figuring out what to do with with passive acoustic data is difficult. So if we go back to our Google phone analogy, try taking your Google Google phone to a building site with lots of people talking at the same time and see how well it works. You will find it's definitely not as good as when you're in the office. So I've talked a lot about problems, but what about solutions? So in the example that I gave there, I was using a really simple automated detector. And in reality, we would never use something that's simple because it just it just wouldn't work. Um but what we do have is very, very powerful classification technologies at our um at our disposal. And here's a here's a video that I really like online. And it's showing a um a machine learning-based approach to classification. And so this is this is trying to figure out handwritten numbers. What number does a handwritten number correspond to? And those handwritten numbers are gonna have a huge amount of variation because everyone writes slightly differently. Um it's so it's a it's a it's a typical pattern recognition problem. And here, a neural network has been used to solve that. And you can see in the video that this neural network is incredibly complex. So it's considering a whole different raft of of aspects of this image. And it's also very, very accurate. So it's able to deal with this variation in the data really well. Um and it's a it's a fantastic pattern recognition tool. So this is exactly what pass what we need for passive acoustic monitoring. We want tools that can deal with this highly variable data that we are collecting. So if we have those tools, then why haven't we solved it? Why haven't we made the the um this the app that can that can e- easily extract all the data? Um from our from our passive acoustic recordings? Well. Let's just compare a big tech company to our field of passive acoustics. First of all, um let's think about Google. And they they have um say a photograph app and that app, you can type in dog. And generally, images in your photo library of dogs will come up. The thing is that Google has a massive training data set of images. And it can and and one of the things that really makes these classifiers work is having a huge amount of training data. Um in in passive acoustic monitoring, we have very few of those ar- archival data sets that we can use. And because there's many environments in which there haven't been any passive acoustic studies, then those training data just don't exist. Google also has a massive budget to do all of this. And what we're we're all on academic shoestring budgets and um collaborating in our little silos. And the second thing is, or the the last thing is that is that Google, um or or tech companies in general. They do produce a lot of open source software and a lot of open source APIs. And in passive acoustics um and in academia in general, we often publish papers and and don't. Um and don't give people the 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 algorithms or make them easily accessible. So so there's a lot of difference there. Despite the fact that we have a few disadvantages compared to giant tech companies, the field is really moving forward. And we are building excellent algorithms for many different species. So for example, there is a recent paper on right whale up calls. And that has been a problem but for a long time because they are confounded by much more numerous humpback whale calls. And a deep learning approach was used and it increased the accuracy way above any uh the best current classifiers. And this has been a problem for for decades. So are we there? Have we got the solution to all of this? Well, um apart from the fact that we need more training data, we need more collaboration and open source tools. There is a fundamental problem in in my opinion with with this methodology. And that is that um any machine learning-based approach will only be as good as the training data and the context for which it was trained for. So let's go back to our porpoise. We have all these porpoise clicks, they've got very variable waveforms, but we make a machine learning classifier. That can that looks at the waveform and says, is this a porpoise click? And it has very high accuracy. So what happens if something produces a porpoise click like click? That machine learning classifier will say that's a porpoise. But if me as a manual analyst went in and went saw those data, I might be thinking, well, that's a bit uniform. I wouldn't really um think that's a porpoise click. Or maybe the inter-click interval looks a bit stranger, maybe it's around for a little bit too long. And if the machine learning classifier has not been trained to look at those those aspects, then it won't pick that up at all. So what automated algorithms are really good at consistency? They can be very, very accurate, especially with the modern technologies that we have. But they can't deal with unexpected inconsistencies in data. So that is, I think, key in passive acoustic monitoring. And so what do we need? We need both so we need software. We need software which can allow us to implement these very powerful classification methodologies. But we also need to be able to rapidly visualize data. And I think that is key in passive acoustic monitoring. Um the problem with software is that it is a it is often a trade-off between complexity and flex- complexity and flexibility. So if you have a a very complex program, then it's very flexible. So the so the the sort of extreme case would be a programming language. You could do anything in MATLAB. Implement any machine learning classifier, build any graph to visualize your data. But it's it's complex to use because you have to learn a programming language. Um, and programs like Pangard, for example, they are they're not as complex as a programming language, but they do a lot. So they have a steep learning curve. And then you have programs maybe like CPod dot X C, which um only does one thing, so it's a little bit easier easier to learn. By the problem, I think, in passive acoustic monitoring is that we 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 don't have really any program that is very accessible and very flexible. And you by using open source and collaboration and particularly by designing um really good user interfaces with good help files and tutorials, uh we can we can lower the technical barriers to the analysis of PAM data and allow people to both visualize their data and to implement the automated algorithms. So so why why is PAM so hard? Well, I think it's very complex and we need um better software uh and and better hardware as well. Uh, which I haven't really talked about, but because there's not enough time in this talk. But the future of PAM, therefore, I think, as well as um continued research into into the algorithms and into 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 automated data extraction, a a big aspect of the future is going to be accessibility. And in the hardware space, that is really taking off at the moment. Um, projects like the Audio Moth project, where they have developed really nice, open source, low cost, easily usable hardware for the terrestrial environment. Um, and that that have really revolutionized things in the last few years. And in the software space, there are those of us that are working to try and make software more intuitive, to try and lower those technical barriers for people um and and allow um the analysis of large datasets. Is passive acoustic monitoring hard? It's because we're dealing with really complex animals in a very complex environment, which means that we have received very variable received data and we don't have the intuitive software to be able to apply these advanced classification tools and allow data visualization. So we have some human oversight. And I had that weird title slides that had these sort of squiggly letters and you can see it here in the background of this slide. And what was that all about? Well, that used to be a uh an an internet security tool where machines just couldn't pick out those those letters and they weren't able to deal with all the variation um and and complexity. And that's it had to be a human. So it was a rope test if we were a robot or not. Um, and now uh machine learning and pattern recognition um al- algorithms are a lot better and and really, you know, they can they can deal with a lot of variation these days. But we still need human oversight of the data because they can't deal with these inconsistencies. So my advice to people going into passive acoustic monitoring is that it is a really powerful methodology, but it's still developing. And there's new things coming on all the time. And just be suspicious of people that oversimplify things, say, oh, that's easy. Um, you know, a porpoise click can just be detected using this this basic algorithm that we engineers have always known about. That's usually not true because they don't, people don't understand the complexity of biological data. So um but in saying that, although the data is complex, there really there are the tools out there now and there's more and more coming online. So I if you get into passive acoustic monitoring, if you if you decide that that's the way to go for your particular project or study, then um it's a really good thing to learn and I'm sure you won't regret it. Uh, and I'd just like to finish off by saying thank you to the African Bioacoustics Conference um and especially uh the team that's been organizing all all of this. And that is.
Hello, I'm Peter McGregor.
And I'm Andy Horn and together we edit the journal Bioacoustics.
So our role in this session today is to take you through ways in which you can publish your bioacoustics research. So we want to start off by looking at uh where is the best place to publish? And then look in detail at which of the many journals you could choose to present your research in. And then some of the things which can influence how likely it is your manuscript is to be published. And we'll finish with a brief look at a couple of developments and the issues associated with them, which are likely to um affect your publication future, really, I think. Okay, so we're taking as a given that you're going to be publishing in a peer reviewed journal. And the reason for that is that it's s- sort of as shown by this cartoon, um it's regarded as the academic gold standard. And the reason for that is that um your manuscript will only appear once it's been commented on by a couple of experts in your field. And um it it's been um examined from the point of view of actually not making any obvious mistakes and and fitting in with um the the general way of publishing things. There are other ways in which you can publish and there's a a list of them there. Um, we're only going to deal briefly with pre-print servers right at the end. Um, but there are other ways of publishing.
Yeah, various means of social media have become uh huge in terms of of promoting your work, getting your getting your work um out in front of in front of people, uh reaching the audience that you want to reach. Uh, Twitter and so on, uh which we're going to leave aside, but maybe we can talk about that in the uh question period.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I mean, it is it's something which I I'm sure most of the audience would be very familiar with, probably far more familiar than I am, but it it is clearly an important thing to to be up to speed with. Okay, so given that you're going to be publishing in a peer reviewed journal, um you'd think that would be then fairly straightforward as to which peer reviewed journal, but in fact, it's not. Um, there are many, many journals. So we want to just introduce you to ways of considering the different types of journals. Talk a bit about um the ones to avoid, usually called predatory journals. And then briefly look at a couple of things which might make any particular journal the best one for you to publish your research in. So in terms of types of journals, you can divide them um by content, really. Uh, so if we just consider specialist journals, um, the top three are specialists in particular topics. So again, it's pretty obvious from the titles. Bioacoustics specializes in bioacoustics, animal behavior in animal behavior and acta etalogica in ethology. Which means that that's what those journals will be publishing in. You won't find anything which is not bioacoustics in the journal Bioacoustics. Similarly, um you can divide journals by which taxon they specialize in. And some journals, as shown by the three in the bottom, will only deal with particular taxonomic groups. So if you're working on whales, um that neither of none of those three journals would actually be appropriate to publish in. But if you're working on bioacoustics in whales or some aspect of their behavior, then one of the specialist journals up at the top divided by topic might well be the ones to go for.
Yeah, this is something.
The other thing to.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Something that we'll we'll spend a fair bit of time on uh uh in this in this talk because it it's an issue that comes up again and again when we receive manuscripts. You know, what's your introduction of your paper? Uh, what what context is it being set in? What literature is it a contribution to? And you want to have a a honest look at that and uh think through it a- as you're writing your paper. Uh, because that's going to determine where you send your your manuscript. And if it's not appropriate for the journal, it's it's not going to get anywhere.
Yeah, and and the uh um aim here is really to try and um prevent you um losing time by sending your your manuscript to the wrong journal. Um, there's another sort of of journal, uh which we haven't mentioned yet, which we could regard as um general journals in the sense that they don't specialize in anything other than, I guess, science. So you've heard of of these probably. You'll also probably have heard of PNAS or Plus One. Um, the thing to point out about these is despite the fact that they don't specialize, um that doesn't make them the kind of default option. Um, th- there are various other aspects which we might have time to talk about, which mean that these are probably not going to be your first choice journals for your first paper. So moving on to another way in which journals differ, and that's ownership, which might seem a bit of an odd thing to say, given that most journals are owned by publishers. But we wanted to point out that there are some journals that are owned by academic societies and animal behavior is a very good example of this in our area. So um the point there is that the academic society almost always makes the contents of the journal um freely available to members of that society. So if you're a member of ASAB in the UK or Europe or the ABS in um North America, then anything published in animal behavior is yours to read for free. Um, and it means that you're immediately getting as an author um a wide readership for your research. Really, without having to do very much, there are probably a few thousand members of both those societies. And in principle, every one of them will know that your manuscript has been published. And that's that's actually pretty good going in terms of getting your research out there. So it's it's worth thinking about who owns the journal you wish to publish in and how that might impact um the the likelihood of the appropriate people seeing your research. Moving on now to the ones to avoid. So predatory journals um look very, very like peer reviewed academic journals. The difference is uh there is no peer review. So um what is actually the the kind of hallmark, gold standard of a peer reviewed journal doesn't happen with with these journals. And it means that they're actually a bit of a liability if you wind up with one on your CV. So you you do want to avoid them. Um, a couple of other things that distinguish them, uh they will always want a fee for publishing. Um, although it's it's not a particularly high fee, which we may be talk about later, but it is a fee. Um, and then the other thing which is odd about them is that they will solicit manuscripts. And something which is very unusual um in in from for peer review, peer reviewed journals to do. To give you an idea of how many of them there are, this is uh an old graphic. It only goes up to twenty fourteen on the on the X axis. But the maximum value of that red curve on the Y axis there is eight thousand. So in twenty fourteen, there were eight thousand predatory journals in science. Um, given that there are probably about thirty thousand journals overall, that's almost a third of journals or predatory journals. So it's um it's the sort of thing that you could come across if you're searching on the internet for a suitable home for your manuscript, which is why we wanted to point it out. Uh, it's unlikely that you would get at them through other routes in the sense of your supervisor suggesting them. But if you were doing some research on your own, you you could come across them. Okay, so this is an example of the way they operate. Um, I got this last month. Um, and it's a common pattern. Just after you publish um in a peer reviewed journal, you'll often get um an email like this saying uh various things, but basically trying to get you to submit a manuscript to them.
This is this is actually a very well crafted example compared to many of the ones uh that that I get just about every day, uh you know. We loved your article on acoustic interaction and nestling birds, so we welcome your contribution to the Journal of Concrete Science or something like that. And uh reinforced concrete or some medical journal or something. And um that's that's one way to to spot these uh uh is is that the these emails are coming from very inappropriate journals for your work. But also, uh, it's very rare that uh that somebody's going to invite you to publish uh something in their in their journal. The the only times, at least for me anyway, the the only times I get that kind of request that's legitimate is from a a a colleague, you know, somebody I know who knows me. And um so it's a more of a personal request to maybe write a book chapter or something like that. So if you if you're getting this something from somebody you don't you don't know, uh, watch out.
And um those, you know, those are all really good indicators of of when something is not quite right. Um, and again, you can use a a couple of resources on the web to simply type in the name of the journal and see whether it pops up as a legitimate journal or not. Um, both of these two sites um do things in slightly different ways. Scholarly Open Access tells you whether they think it's a predatory journal. Publons tells you whether um they think it's a legitimate journal. But either way, it's a good way of double checking that this is not a predatory journal that you're about to submit to. So those are some considerations. There are others. We're going to talk more about um getting a good fit with the scope of a journal. And we've already talked about being widely read. It's also worth thinking about how fast your article will be published once it's been accepted. Um, because that can vary quite a lot uh along journals. And um in particular, in the days when papers were only published in um hard copy and there was no electronic um counterpart, that could be months, I mean, like several months. So most paper journals now also have something like online first where it is um published more rapidly than you'd you would expect with it just being a paper journal. But it's worth checking what what that is, if it matters to you, which it usually does, to to get this stuff out fast. We're going to talk about funds for open access later on. Um, and I think, looking at the time, we're probably going to leave impact factors. Um, uh, any sort of discussion about those until the the questions at the end. So what we're going to do now is to move on to the next section, which is uh how do you give your manuscript the best chance of appearing in a particular journal? Because almost always, there's competition for journal space. So we've already talked about this, we introduced it. I mean, the reason for emphasizing it is that it is the first hurdle which your manuscript can fail or fall. So you need to check that your manuscript meets the the scope of the journal. And so the easiest way to do it is to go to their website, look for the list of names and scopes and then um see what it says. So again, it shouldn't be a surprise to you to hear that bioacoustics focuses on sound communication in various animal groups. And usually what happens is there's then a list of of topics which you can see going down there. Um, which uh within which the things will be published. Andy's already mentioned the importance of the introduction in working out whether you fit the journal scope or not. Um, another thing to consider is just looking at your reference list. So if most of your references are to um, you know, the Journal of the Concrete Society, then probably you shouldn't be thinking about publishing in in bioacoustics. But one thing we want to emphasize is that we're both very happy for you to drop us an email. Um, preferably with an abstract of your manuscript. And if you're not sure whether it fits the journal scope, um we're quite happy to tell you whether we think it does or not. Of course, it's no guarantee it'll eventually be published, but at least we'll it will get it over the first hurdle of being sent out for peer review.
Yeah, that's that's an important thing to uh to try to remember is is uh it's it's very scary. Um, preparing your manuscript and sending it off and then you get these these reviews back, which uh can be uh constructively and helpfully uh written. Sometimes they're quite, you know, quite critical too. And um it's a it it it's kind of a daunting process, especially when you're first starting out. It's kind of like you're sending it back to this behind this curtain and then you get your reviews back. Uh, but in between there are the editors of the journal and um in general, they're quite quite approachable and they want your work to have the best crack at reaching your intended audience as possible. And uh so don't hesitate to contact uh either of us if you have any any questions at all about the the publication process.
Yeah, if you if you just take one thing away from from this whole talk, it's that um talking to us and indeed most other editors is is possible um and actually really important in in many instances. Another thing to uh consider when you're preparing your manuscript is to make sure that you're following the instructions for authors. So all journals have instructions for authors. They vary enormously in how detailed they are. But again, you'll find links on their website and one thing to. And one thing to pay attention to is formatting the references, which might seem a bit trivial, but most journals use slightly different formats for their references for whatever reason. The nice thing is there's software that can really, really help these days, both to manage your references or your, yeah, your references in the first place, but then also to help you when you're writing your manuscript. So for example, this piece of software, Mendeley, which is free, has an add-on for Word, which will check that anything that you cite in the text also appears in your reference list, which is again, part of producing a manuscript which has a professional look about it when it arrives at the journal.
Yeah, you want to make sure that all these things are in place because you do want, you do want the manuscript to appear that you've done, you've done your homework and you've prepared it carefully and so on. Because to the degree that it's, that it hasn't been prepared that way, it doesn't meet the, the journal's style or it's, there's spelling errors or whatever in it. It can reflect badly on the, on the evaluation of the manuscript. So these things are easy to get right, so you may as well get them, get them right. Another thing I would add to, for all this stuff is look at what's been published in the journal that you're interested in submitting to, look at the other papers and see how they're, not only what their topic is, but how they, how they set that in context and also how, how the paper itself is prepared in terms of the mechanics of preparing it.
That's a very, very good tip, I think, you know, follow what, what has gone on before. You will get various requirements made of you. For example, declarations like this ethical statement are really important to provide. And depending on the publisher, you may actually not be able to submit the manuscript without one. It may simply stop at that point. One thing which can cause an issue is if you have a number of co-authors, some journals require each of the co-authors independently to submit a statement that they are aware that you're submitting that manuscript on their behalf and that you're, you've seen it and you're happy with it. So, you know, you need to know where your co-authors are at about the time you submit because otherwise it's going to sit there waiting for your final co-author to, to actually realise they, they need to do something. So again, it's worth looking at the, the fine print in, in these things. One thing, one opportunity that you have really stems from the old days when you used to ship off great big thick envelopes full of many copies of your manuscript to the publisher in order for them to be sent out for refereeing. Even though that's all done electronically these days, there's still the opportunity to add a so-called covering letter. And there are, there are a few things that we think are really quite important to do here. One is make sure that we know about things which you think we might otherwise miss. If we've had a discussion, for example, about whether the manuscript fits the scope of the journal, gently remind us of that because there's a lot of manuscripts going across our desk and, and, you know, we, we forget stuff. So that's always good. The middle one we'll come on to a little bit later on. And the final one is you, you don't need to try and sell your manuscript in that covering letter. In fact, we, we really urge you to avoid that. That's what peer review is all about. It's about getting an independent view on whether this manuscript is right for the journal and for the field in, in general. So, so please don't use the covering letter for a sales pitch. Moving on to the final section now, which is to do with a couple of developments and the issues they've triggered. I'm sure you're all familiar with open access. This little cartoon sort of summarizes the problem that we still come across, which is that often there are manuscripts that are behind a paywall and we don't want as individual scientists to pay to access that manuscript. So open access in principle is a great idea and in practice it can be a great idea as well. But there is an issue. And the issue is that the publisher's funding model, and remember publishers own most of the journals, their funding model used to be to sell subscriptions of journals to libraries. That meant that the institution or the members of the institution that housed that library had access to those journals. The model is now changing to one where the publishers require the author, which usually means their research funder, to pay a charge for the processing of that manuscript. Sometimes it's called the article processing charge. And that's something that is, it, it's a, it's something which has been changing very rapidly. There's probably been more change in the last 18 months on open access and the requirements of funders to publish in open access journals than there has been in the previous 18 years, I think is my take on it. From the point of view of Africa, the African Academy of Sciences supports this open access push, which is being driven by something called Plan S, which originated with national funding bodies in Europe, but is actually now international. The AAS is a so-called supporter of Coalition S, which is funders getting together to get behind this, this approach. And you may already be, if you have funding from the African Academy of Sciences, you may already be aware of their own journal, Open Research, which I think is not, well, I'm not sure whether it's a requirement to publish in that. But the fact that it's a supporter of Coalition S means that you will be required to publish in an open access journal, which is fine, provided that your funder has the funds for you to do that. What's not fine is that if you look at other sources of funding for article processing charges, there are apparently only three funds in Africa. This is, this graphic is from the Springer Nature Publishing Group. And the contrast there is very stark between North America, where there are almost 100, and in Europe where it's getting on towards 200. So this suggests that finding funding in addition to your research funding for article publishing charges might be quite hard. So it's definitely something to, to bear in mind. And the final thing we wanted to do was to go back to the, our mention of pre-print servers. So basically this is somewhere online where you can archive your manuscript before peer review. It's then available for, people can comment on it and give you feedback, which you can then use to, to change it and improve it before submission. Most publishers generally think this is a very good idea. An example of one in biology is Bio Archive, which is shown on the left there. The issue that it raises is that most publishers use plagiarism software to check for already published material or material on the web, which is very similar. And pre-prints will trigger that. So, you know, suddenly you get a manuscript which comes back with a value of 80 or 90% similarity. Unfortunately, the software doesn't then say, oh, that's almost certainly pre-print. It just puts a great big red cross against it. And then depending on the publisher, it either doesn't make it to the editors, it just gets sent straight back. Or the editor gets an alert that there's a big issue with this, this paper. And you then have to dig around and find that out. So if you tell us in a covering letter that this manuscript has appeared on a pre-print server, then that's brilliant. We then go, okay, right, that's where that big number comes from. Everyone's happy, we move on and go through the process.
Yeah, the same, same goes for conference proceedings or, you know, it might be a local publication that's not a scientific publication per se, but the, but it got published there. You know, a field station in-house summary of, of work that's done at the field station. Anything, any form in which it's published, just let us know.
Okay, so we've pretty much come to the end of our time. So just to, a quick summary of, of what we've talked about is on the screen now. I think rather than read them out, I'll leave them there for you. And to just thank you for your attention. It's been interesting producing this recording. And I think it might well be interesting in the next stage where we try and answer your questions live, given that I'm on the east side of the Atlantic and Andy's on the west coast. And we're trying to talk to you down the southern hemisphere. So fingers crossed for the technology and thank you again very much for your attention.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Welcome everybody and nice to see you all. And we've had lots of questions and so I'm going to try and arrange this in some useful format. But what we're going to do is there, there are questions which are directed to each of you. Then there are also questions that I have a good feeling that other people on the panel will have input for. So, um, you know, it might be that one of the questions is sort of obviously for Suann or obviously for Peter and Andy or so forth. But then I want you to have the opportunity to, to chime in. So I'm going to start and then if it feels like it's going for, for one person in particular, that's great. But then the other people can just contribute as and, as and when they, they feel like it. So we'll see how that goes. Do I have a quick, be quick. There we go. I am neither of those things, none of those things. Okey dokey. So the first question was directed to Suann, but I have a feeling other people might, might want to answer as well. And it says, thank you for a really useful and informative talk. How would you go about correcting for distance if you don't know how far away the animal was? Say data were collected from a moored hydrophone.
Well, I would say you can't do it, but maybe Jamie has a, a different answer.
Yeah, I mean, it's very, very difficult to do that. There are some techniques where you know the, in the marine environment certainly, where you really know bathymetry and the Sinesby profile and you have, you know, echoes of the sea floor and seabed and you can get a distance. But really without multiple hydrophones, it's a huge pain. And it may not work anyway. So yeah, a single hydrophone, very, very, or microphone, I'm sure are very, very difficult.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the answer that you need. If you don't know where the animal is, because you weren't there in person, you're going to need multiple recording places and then you can calculate it from the array that you set up of microphones or hydrophones.
Great, okay. Actually, I was just thinking somebody did something like that at one of the talks. The World SMM Conference with beam profiling or something, but I'm going off on one, so I'm going to stop there. But I've got a related question, but I think might also be directed at Sue, but I think also may come in for the marine side as well. So it's also, do we need or have to calibrate our recording devices? Hydrophone sensitivity to measure underwater sound pressure levels?
Well, I, again, I don't know very much about underwater, but if you were doing that in air, you could calibrate your microphones, either that you calibrate your microphone itself in a laboratory or you can, using a sound pressure level meter, make a recording of a reference sound that you measure, so you know how loud that sound is. And you can use that in your software to calibrate the recordings that you've made. So if I was going to go out and record an animal nearby here, I, I could go out with a loudspeaker and play a tone. And, you know, a three second long tone and, and make a measurement of how loud that tone is and record it in the same recording that I'm going to use to record the animal. And then when I take that into my software, I know that that sound that I recorded, that I measured is a, is a, you know, X decibel relative to the, you know, decibel SPL, then I can use that to kind of measure how loud the other sounds in the recording are.
Anybody else want to say in there?
Yeah, just the same, it's the same for the marine environment. You, you either, sometimes you get manufacturers have the, have the values, but they can also be quite off sometimes. And so, yeah, you just measure it yourself.
I would, I would also advise fiddling around with various calibration sounds too. I work dressed early, you can get some really weird effects with, with, you know, sounds bouncing off nearby boundaries like nearby walls or something like that. So you want to, you want to play around a little bit with it, different frequencies of sounds and so on. So you're, you're, so that you're sure you're getting the same answer roughly.
Yeah.
Thanks. Sorry.
No, I was just saying it's, it's, I was just agreeing, that's it.
I've got a related, I was just wondering as well, this is, this is sort of coming from me, not from anybody who's written in. You know, if you do conduct calibration, how often would you recalibrate?
For making these, you know, background noises, I would do that like making a playback of a sound that you're measuring. I would do that for every time you kind of stop and start a recording where you've changed position or you've changed settings, you know. So if you're, if you're moving somewhere else and you bump into your gain on your recorder, right? Everything is gonna, you won't be able to use that original recording. So if I'm going to do a long reach recording, I would do a new one at the beginning or the end of each recording session where I'm in one position and using that microphone.
Anybody, anybody else want to chime in there for that, that topic? No, all good. Okay, I'm gonna go to Jamie. And it says, hey Jamie, was that data focused on isolation of one porpoise only?
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was just one porpoise. And if you have many, then it becomes even more complicated. So if you have to disentangle them from your recordings and, yeah, has a, has a whole new aspect.
Yeah, I mean, that makes, that makes passive acoustic much more difficult, isn't it? When you've got group effects as well and you have to know something about your group size or your group dynamics.
I mean, I've got some, something stuck in my throat there. If you, if, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it depends what you're doing. If you're looking for something like density estimation, then knowing your group size can be really important. And that can be very difficult in passive acoustic monitoring because one without, pardon me, I think I'm going to have to get a drink of water.
Do we come back for you?
Two seconds.
Don't you worry.
Yeah, you can carry on to the next one.
Absolutely. No stress. I've got some questions on the publishing side of things. So we're going to go across and then we're going to loop back again. So, um, it was already answered in, in the, the text, but I'm going to ask it again. And the question was, is it easy to publish on mammals, in mammals bioacoustics?
Well, I guess I could answer that because I answered it in the, in the, in the text. But, uh, yeah, well, it's, it's as, as easy as it is to publish anything in bioacoustics. So, you know, if you've got good data, let's assume, you know, good data and, you know, well executed studies, I'm sure would be true. Then there's plenty of venues for work in mammalian bioacoustics. I, I would say maybe even more scope than for trying to get something published on birds where, you know, they've done just about everything on birds or many topics in marine mammals or in the neurons, you know, frogs and toads. Whereas mammals, I think there's a, there's a, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of scope for that terrestrial mammals.
Peter, do you want to have anything to add there? Oh, we can't hear Peter.
Peter, your audio doesn't seem to be working.
Peter, we have an issue with your audio. Peter, can you hear us? It's very quiet. Okay, we'll come back to him. Okay, I'll ask another question about the, the publishing. But Andy, I think if we can't hear Peter, if he doesn't, you have to message just to let him know.
I think he can hear that we can't hear him, he just needs to connect his microphone if he can. Can you hear me, Peter? Put a thumbs up if you can hear us. So maybe just go to your audio settings, um, and just make sure that you're, um, using your built in output and your built in microphone. The joys of doing.
Now? Peter, we can't hear you. I'm very sad.
Oh, there you are.
Did it work? Right. Well, this is where we have a long session, so that's all good. Um, Peter, did you have anything to add there? We didn't hear anything you said, unfortunately. So if you have anything you'd like to repeat, that would be awesome.
Okay, um, it's really just to echo what Andy said, that, um, the the decision on whether to publish a paper in bioacoustics is not taken on the basis of taxonomic groups. You know, there are times when we occasionally get people commenting that there's nothing but frog papers in bioacoustics. That's actually not down to us. That's just what comes in and what is considered to be of of publishable quality. So, um, ultimately, that that is the key thing, that the, provided the the quality is there, then we'll publish it. Is that, can you, you're looking a bit puzzled, Tess. Can you still hear me okay?
No, no, I'm, I'm there. I'm just, I mean, my own little thought process is here. Now we can hear you.
Good. Um, yeah, so that that's it. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking about, um, you know, the different standards and whether or not, just taking this question, just thinking about it in a bit more detail. Um, whether if you've got something, you know, a rare species or, you know, species which is undescribed. Um, you know, how that works, because obviously, in an ideal scenario, the quality would be standard across. Um, but is there an, you know, an argument that if it's a first description or a rare species, then maybe that that gets gets through the door in a, in a, in a journal? And even if perhaps the acoustic analysis or some aspects weren't maybe as as high caliber as other content?
Um, I think that we'd be guided by what the referees told us. We we have a, um, we'd have a bit of a a view on, um, what we think would be of general interest to people in in bioacoustics. So that that's the the readers of bioacoustics. So, um, there there would be a case to look at, um, what's been published and say, well, okay, uh, you know, the report that this is the first time this sort of noise has been noted for a frog. Is it's probably bioacoustics may or may not be the right place to publish that. It depends on what the consequences of that report are. If it means, you know, suddenly we've got to start thinking about frogs in a wider bioacoustic context. Or if the implications are really more for herpetology in terms of what that means for frog vocal structures, then that would be sort of guiding which way that went. But I think it's fair to say, but it'd be interesting to see what Andy has to say with the manuscripts he looks at. I don't think I've ever had a real problem, um, along the lines of, I don't think the information I'm getting back from the referees is helping me to make a decision here. Usually I I I get very clear views back from the referees and and they're, they generally agree on whether it would be a good idea to publish it in bioacoustics. And if it's not, um, they're generally saying, well, okay, this is interesting, but really this should go in a bird journal because, um, there are implications for ornithology and maybe ecology, but not really much for bioacoustics. It's kind of being covered in bioacoustics. Does that sort of get the answer towards where you want to go? Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's very interesting, interesting conversations to have. But thank you for that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump. This is a kind of a general question, so anybody can jump in, I think, and answer this. Alexa asks, is there such a thing as a sampling at too high a rate? So if if in the theoretical world where storage space was not a problem, would sampling at 100 hertz sound at, say, 500 kilohertz signals, or is this merely a problem if sampling rates are low?
I can do that then, that, uh, no, technically no, apart from the fact that you're going to be using vast amounts of data, which you, which, um, because devices, and especially in the marine environment, are often data battery limited. And then you could be really curtailing the amount of good data that you might want to collect. Um, but the 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 other thing to consider is that if you're using a very high sample rate, you want to be using a, um, a hydrophone that's sensitive at those sample rates or a microphone. Um, and those kind types of, um, you you could have a microphone that's very sensitive at high frequencies. So it picks up the high 500 kilo and stuff. But you would be then, at the low frequencies, it might be quite insensitive. And so you would be missing some things or it wouldn't be, you wouldn't detect at such distance. So you need to be really careful, especially if you bought like a hydrophone and device that was designed for high sampling rates, um, together. Um, and then decided to use it, um, in the low frequency space or or vice versa. So that would be my take on it.
That's exactly what I would have said, both that you you waste a lot of, um, processing power, sampling that that high, but also microsensitivity, especially for terrestrial, unless you specifically have a ultrasonic microphone. Most, uh, typical microphones for terrestrial, uh, recordings are not going to have sensitivity above 20 or so kilohertz.
Um, I have another question. So, um, this is aimed at Suann, but anybody can join in. It's thanks for a great talk. Do you have any suggestions to measure particle motion components? Hydrophones. Suann, you've got all the hydrophone questions.
I have no idea about that. I'm sorry to say.
Anybody else want to contribute to that one?
I have no idea either. I'm sure it can be done.
Um, okay, I'm going to come to, okay, what is the hearing frequency range for harbor porpoises? And do they have, um, categorized sounds in terms of frequency range with their activity? So it seems like foraging and communicating, I think the question is getting at, do they have different sound types under those behaviors?
Well, I report this is here at very high frequencies, so, um, they hear up to 150 kilohertz. Um, because that's where their echolocation clicks are. Um, and if you saw that talk by Chloe Malinka on, um, the, um, the Koji, they're very, very similar vocalizations there. So, um, she she goes and she went into a bit on that. Uh, they, they don't have any tonal vocalizations. Um, and, uh, there's, so they're in, their communication is encoded in the, um, we think in the interval between their clicks. So communication, um, uh, generally involves a, there's a, there's a sort of subset of intervals between clicks that are, we think are communication. And we call them communication calls, but they're bites of very, very rapid clicks. And then for foraging, they also use very rapid clicks, but those occupy occupy a different, um, interclick interval, interclick interval space. Um, so that's, that's, that's how they do it. But there is very little information on porpoise communication.
Oh, yeah, no, they, I, I agree. Sorry. I'm looking at all of these, the the questions keep coming in and it's like, it's like worsen mothering levels of multitasking going on here. So I'm not obviously as technological as I would like. You know, I thought I had my questions all lined up nicely and now they've all jumped about a bit. Um, I am going to go to Peter and Andrew and ask, what would you say the etiquette is on checking up on your reviewers? How long should you wait after your submission before following up?
Oh, boy. Um, okay. That's, that's a, uh, an extremely good and very timely question. Um, for the obvious reason that we're all operating under very different circumstances at the moment. So, uh, most journals will have at least an indicative, um, time scale for you to get an initial response. That's changed quite a lot, uh, over the last year. Um, and and just generally, it's become much more variable. Uh, so lockdown has both been good and terrible from the point of view of delays. You know, if you're, if you're locked in somewhere and your only thing to do is just to actually review that paper that you agreed to review now rather than waiting until the deadline, um, that's brilliant and that does happen. But what also happens is that someone is finds themselves, um, you know, at a remote field site, uh, locked down there and they can't get back to any of their usual support stuff. And the last thing they're thinking about doing is reviewing a manuscript. So, um, generally, I think, uh, cut a bit of slack to the referees. Certainly, that's what we are doing. I think the other thing to remember is that referees are not paid to provide their opinion. Um, and as anyone in academia will tell you, if you give them a millisecond, there are many, many things that are competing for an academic's time. The only thing that keeps peer review going is that it's a sort of reciprocal altruism. That if you want someone to referee papers, actually, at some point, that means you're going to have to referee papers too. Because that's the only way it works. So I haven't really answered the question. I've just waffled on a bit about why it might take a lot longer than anyone would like. And I think that would probably be my starting position. Ideally, someone would agree to referee, they would have the manuscript instantly, which happens digitally, so that's fine. And they would get it back to us within a couple of days. We'd be able to make a decision, you know, within a couple of days of getting the the manuscript back. And then we'd send it on to the author and we could, we could move on from there. In practice, yeah, in in practice, it never works like that. But you don't want to hear our problems. What we're, we're trying to do is to get the first decision back to authors as quickly as possible because, um, well, basically, we know what it's like. We've been in that position of having submitted a manuscript, I'm thinking of one right now, which has been with the referees for, well, initially, the journal claimed they didn't have it, but they did really. Um, and it's been with referees now for nearly four months. And it's getting to the stage where we're having to think what to do next. Interestingly, it's, it's been quite a good thing from my perspective. As kind of on the one hand, wearing an authorship or co-authorship hat, and on the other hand, wearing an editor editor hat, because I know the issues that the editor of that journal will be going through. On the other hand, that's too long. I mean, I would really hope never to get past a couple of months in terms of waiting for a response. So the short answer, I think, is to go back to what Andy and I, um, freely offered, which is, if you've got concerns, um, send us an email. It is possible that something's gone wrong with the system. It definitely happens. Uh, it is possible that we've missed something. Goodness knows, uh, we're only human. Um, so, uh, yeah, send us an email. You know, usual rules apply. Everyone is trying to do their best. So, um, if we get an email saying, what the hell have you done with my manuscript? This is ridiculous, da, 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 da. Um, it's not the best, but to sort of start off with, um, uh, you know. So, yeah, again, try and cut everyone a bit of slack. But at the same time, please don't assume that if you haven't heard anything, um, after a reasonable amount of time, that there's nothing wrong. There might be something wrong. So it's perfectly reasonable and we think it's reasonable for you to send us an email saying, look, um, it's been, you know, getting on for three months now. That's an awfully long time. Um, actually, you don't even need to say that because we know it's an awfully long time. And we'll then send you a reply, um, which may be, you know, we're working on it. And in those, sometimes in those instances, we will make a decision based on fewer referees' reports than we would normally, because of the time constraints. Um, and that's the the best compromise. Um, there are issues with only having one referee's report. Even if we're reading it as well, um, but but Andy, you, we should have your views too.
No, I would, I would basically add echo the same thing. And and, uh, yeah, don't hesitate to write, uh, because it would be, it would be a bad editor that took that badly if the, if the manuscript's been setting, sitting for a while. If they get their nose out of joint because you've written them, then that's on them. I, I, we really have no problem with these requests.
Yeah, I think in my experience as well, I mean, talking and dropping someone an email and just asking, you know, what's happening, but also on the flip side, if you're reviewing something and you're really, you know, stuck and you haven't been able to do it, just emailing through to editors and just explaining your situation, I think, is needed. I mean, um, often you need to have a really clear head to to review a paper and it does take several hours. And and so you need to have the time to do that and to do the paper justice. And rushing it is, it's not really in anybody's interest. So, um, yeah, and my experience of editors has always been that everyone's so nice. So that's good. I'm looking for some people. Suann, we have a question for you. And the, and the question is, what is the difference? Oh, I jumped around again. Seriously, how did that happen? What is, where's it going? What is the difference between impulsive sounds and intermittent sounds? And do you have examples?
What, what's the second kind of sound after impulse?
Intermittent.
Intermittent. Uh, well, I, impulsive sounds are, you know, in in my talk, I was showing you all these like kind of waveforms that have these long repeating periodic patterns. And the impulsive sound is not like that because it's, uh, it has a very short duration, so you don't get this kind of opportunity because the sound is so short to to see this kind of repeating sinusoidal pattern that you would find when you zoom into the waveform of a longer signal. And and so you can't use the same kinds of analysis tools on those impulsive sounds because, you know, if you tried to run something so short through a 4A transform, it's not going to have any information about a periodicity because there isn't a periodic periodic sign signal in there. And so you have to do something else, uh, when you're analyzing those. For example, measuring the rate at which they they come or the impulse size or the, you know, these kind of zero crossing, uh, rate or something of depending on how brief those signals are. Um, I'm not entirely sure what you mean by, uh, intermittent, how that's different than.
Back in a, in a, in a bout perhaps, or something like that.
I mean, so if you have impulses that appear in a, in a bout, then, you know, you have both things to measure about the sound wave itself, but also, or the, you know, the digitized version of that sound wave, but also about the time in between. Um, and I can't remember who this morning, somebody was also talking about how they measured those inter pulse intervals. Maybe it was the bat talk with, with, uh, measuring those space between, uh, those pulses. But, um, when you have a kind of longer sound like, like bird songs or long, like kind of longer utterances of mammals, uh, that that you can find something periodic in there that you could measure frequency from, for example. But it doesn't make sense in a pulse because there's no periodicity. That hopefully that answers the question.
Yes, yeah, it's a little bit of a vague question, but I think, I think it got there. So that's, that's great. I'm going to go to Jamie. And I'm going to ask, uh, Jamie, um, this is from Alexa. She asks, uh, what are your thoughts on using real life data from data collected in the field during industrial activity uh, to add to our training data? So could this be used, um, or would it be too complex to begin with?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it it all depends on what you're doing, right? So if you're analyzing an area or if you want to use, make a classifier using a machine learning approach and you're going to train it with some training data and you're going to use it in this industrial area, then yeah, I mean, that's good. It's good to have those, that noise in the data as long as you've, um, as long as you can be sure that you've kind of accurately annotated it and extracted the signs that you're interested in. Um, if, if what she, what what was meant by that question was, is it really difficult to, to use data from, to to classify data from an area where there's a lot of noise? Well, I mean, that's, that's really context dependent because if the frequency of the. Because if the frequency of the animal is very different to the noise, then you can apply some basic signal processing techniques that will really help you. But if the noise is very similar, then there's going to be, there will be a large effect on your data. And that effect will be both that you will not, the signal to noise ratio of the signal will be reduced in general, which will mean that both that you will not detect animals as far away. And it will mean, as the signal to noise ratio reduces, then generally, the rule of thumb, which is, which is actually, I've never really seen a good exception to this, is that the performance of your automated classifiers will reduce. So if you have a very high signal to noise ratio, a classifier that is usually really good. And if you have a lower signal to noise ratio, that same classifier will perform less well. So those would be the two, those would be the consequences of trying to record in an area with lots of noise.
Yeah. I wonder whether also that was getting it, whether or not you can use data from, say, seismic, collected during seismic in your classifiers, where you may or may not have like an impact of the noise that's, you know, from the air guns. But can you use that data in training? Is it valid to use it in training? Because you've got a noise interference as well. So how valid is it to use that if that's the only data source that you have to train your classifiers?
Well, it may be, but it depends. I mean, if the animal changes its acoustic behavior because of the air gun, then you might be stuffed. On the other hand, maybe it doesn't. And maybe the blank, you know, the times between the air gun is exactly what the animal sounds like in that area and that would be okay. So I think the thing is, is always to, is always to, you want to build a classifier, then you want to test it on some data and check it works. And that's all you can do. And that's why that kind of data visualization tools are important. So yeah, I would say, I would say, basically, I don't know if it's entirely is dependent on the study animal and the study area.
Which is why it makes it quite tricky.
Yeah.
I'm going to zoom through because this is really nice. And I've got more questions to get through. So I'm going to go back to Peter and Andrew and go, the question is, is the impact factor a reliable index to assess the importance of journals? No biases.
Okay, so there are two things to immediately say about impact factors. The first is that they refer to journals and only indirectly to the articles they contain, which is because the way they're calculated is basically over a two-year period, they look to see how many of the articles in that journal are cited and the level at which they're cited. So basically, the bigger the journal, the more articles they contain. And therefore, all other things being considered, you'll have a higher impact factor. So one way of getting a high impact factor is simply to have a very big journal. And that is, that's quite an important thing. The other thing is that the, it doesn't tell you, it doesn't tell you why those articles were cited. And there's a very nice graphic that I'm sure I won't be able to find in time to share on the screen, showing a positive correlation between the impact factor of a journal and the number of retractions associated with that journal. So basically, high impact factor journals have a high number of retractions. There are many reasons for that, which we don't want to go into. But so I think it's something to bear in mind. I've forgotten the question again now. I was so thrown by the whole thing. There is, there is a document which we uploaded, which has a link to impact factors and some of the issues with them. But I think this is probably the point where I'm going to hand over to the younger member of the team and to talk about social media. Because actually, in terms of the impact of your article, which is really what's important, social media can make a heck of a difference, pretty much irrespective of the journal that it's published in. Do you want to say something about social media, Andy?
Sure, I guess so. Yeah, that's become a huge way of, you know, people use the term promoting your article, which is kind of a, makes it sound like, kind of has negative connotations to me. It sounds like advertising or something. But in fact, it's a good way of reaching your intended audience, the, you know, the folks that you want to ultimately read your work and build on that work. And that's become a huge factor in recent years. And it can be a strong benefit to making sure your paper is, if not open source, at least available to the people that you're tweeting to or that you're, you know, targeting with a blog post or whatever. And that arguably can, I haven't read up on all the most recent stuff about this. There's huge interest in this lately. But I would, I think it could arguably be more important than the impact factor of the articles that surround your paper in whatever journal that you've published in. Presenting at conferences, you know, getting out there and talking to people is a good way to make sure that your work's known. You don't want to be obnoxious about it. Nobody, nobody likes this tall, poppy, you know, social climber type, although they can be very successful, you know, maybe resentful or something. But, you know, get out there in an honest, honest way, you know, interacting with people and that can make a huge difference. Yeah, but, but yeah, for more on impact factors, yeah, definitely, I would go to the site that Peter put in that extra material.
I have a question, kind of comment question related to this. It seems that journals differ quite a lot in how much effort they put into kind of advertising to the mainstream media and that kind of general, big name journals tend to have more people from the mainstream media following their press releases than smaller journals. And I wondered if during your prep for this talk, did you find any statistics about that? Like, are there certain ways to kind of get more visible in the kind of mainstream, you know, in the news media or so? Or do you think it makes an impact in the long-term citability of your study if you have more mainstream press? And is it something to consider or not really worth worrying about?
I didn't, I did more on that in my extensive and exhaustive preparation for our talk. But, but I certainly know there's been a lot of, a lot of stuff on that out there. And you remind me of another thing that can be quite helpful is whatever institution that you work with or are associated with can make a huge difference too. So the press folks in your university can, you know, can get the word out there as well. I'll hand it, hand it over to Peter again for further comment.
Again, how can I refuse? Yeah, it's, it's, it is actually quite an important thing because the motivation for, say, any of the mainstream media picking up on a paper in the literature can sometimes be mixed. So, you know, it's, in a way, there's the potential for the research that we do to be pointed out as something which is wasting taxpayers' money. Why on earth would scientists study whether animals in one part of the country sound different from animals in another? And it might be done in a gentle way, you know, who thought about Scouser Robbins, to use a UK example, compared with Cockney Robbins. So it might just be one of those little filler pieces at the end of the news. Or it might be a bigger dig, you know, do you realize this person got over £100,000 to research this? What possible use can that have? And so, you know, I think I would approach, or actually, I wouldn't approach the mainstream media personally. But if they did approach, and when they do approach me, I'm fairly wary about what it is they actually want and what their, what their motivation is for getting that information. I think the thing to be aware of is that your university press office will be far less, well, A, aware of that aspect, but B, probably not even particularly concerned because generally, you know, the old adage that any publicity is good publicity seems to be the way these guys operate. And, you know, what tends to happen is, or what used to happen anyway, is that you'll get a media frenzy. So one outlet will pick it up and then suddenly, before you know it, you know, you've got 30 or 40 emails. Everyone wants you to drop everything, do an interview. And actually, in terms of how, what that will do to your scientific career, I would guess, my view is that that is very much open to debate, whether it does anything at all. What I think what it tends to do when, I mean, you know, it'd be interesting to hear other people's comments on this, both on the chat and just from other speakers. Because part of it is when you hear a piece on the South Broadcast Media, it's like, oh, gosh, I wonder what that paper actually said? Because, you know, what they've just reported doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense and it's probably not what's in the paper. So, you know, part of that is thinking, gosh, I feel sorry for the poor character who, you know, was dragged on to the national radio at half past seven in the morning to try and explain what is actually a very nice piece of research in context, but out of context is just going to sound a bit weird. It's a, I noticed that Maunas Valberg was speaking earlier in the day and I would be very interested to hear his view on this because he has produced a very famous, at least in bioacoustics circles, famous paper on the sound produced, I better say, sound produced by herring. And of course, that got huge media interest because it allowed them to use the full letter word in the title of the article. So yeah, I'd be interested to know about the media frenzy around that. I imagine Maunas handled it absolutely with aplomb, but it would be good to know what he felt about it afterwards and, you know, what he feels the long-term consequences are. Because I'm really not sure. I mean, you know, I don't think the best way to give people an idea of what science is about is to, you know, haul someone out of their lab and with very little warning, stick them under a spotlight and say, what's the point of you doing that research? Because it's not, it's not usually straightforward.
Jamie.
Can I just say something very quickly, which is that people are becoming more interested in crediting you for your programming libraries? So if you're making a library in R or MATLAB or something like that that you think other people use, just generate a DOI for it and it can be referenced in papers. And I think that's going to be more important or get more traction in the future. So just a note for people. That's me.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to try and find it. Simon had a reference somewhere about how papers which got more media coverage were then cited more often. And that seemed quite relevant to this conversation. Also, just from my own experience in the last three weeks, it's exhausting doing a lot of media stuff. It's absolutely draining and exhausting. But yes, there's a pressure to do it because we really need to communicate the science that we do to also just get a profile out there that says we're doing something useful. And so it's a really tricky balance, I think, to play. I have found in my own experience that putting together a decent press release with the university press officer has been really helpful. And then at least you start off on the right foot. You start off with a really nice edited piece of work that you're happy with and it's well communicated. And then at least you start in the right place. If it gets diluted and changed, that might happen, but you started firm. Whereas if you're sort of tweeting things and putting things out bit by bit, sometimes those words can get altered and it gets spun in the middle quite drastically. My take on it. Peter, you're muted. Your audio has gone strange, Peter. I'm sorry. We're not sure why.
In the meantime, I'll say that's a, that's a, that's a great tip, what you just said there. Get off on the right foot with the first press release. Because often, often I find journalists, they're looking for, they're looking for stories and they think, oh, this is going to be the angle with this one. And they've got the wrong angle at the outset. So if you get them the right angle at the outset, because you know why your work's, you know, significant. And you have that at the outset, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, with our signature whistle paper that we had out recently, I had to be very clear that the take-home message wasn't that dolphins have names. We've been working on signature whistles for about 50 years. There was some other stuff there that was a take-home message, but it clearly wasn't that dolphins have names. If we've got time, just one last question. It's from Jack Fury and it's aimed at Jamie. I can see Jamie's got this little intruder coming in and out.
He's got a lot of energy.
For extra, extra sounds. Jack asks, I have a question for Jamie. I am very inexperienced in programming, but I have a strong interest in it, especially with the way data analysis is headed. Where do you recommend jumping in to learn? Are online education courses like DataCamp or edX useful? What language or languages do you think would be most important to learn moving forward?
That's a good question. Okay, so there's like tiers of programming languages. So there's something like C, the C language is, gives you a lot of control, but it's quite difficult to learn. And then you'll kind of go up the languages until you get to something like R or MATLAB or Python. And those languages are really what I would say most people should be looking at for brain or passive acoustics. If you want to learn, I mean, everyone learns differently, but I just learn by doing. And I hate taking courses. So I just start, I just download the program, figure out how I should get it set up on my computer. And then I start typing away. And then when I'm stuck, I go onto YouTube and look at, or do a Google search, you go onto YouTube and then just learn. And I think having a problem that you want to solve with your programming language and then starting there is the way to go. And just try and solve that problem and just, just go for it would be my, would be my advice. And it looks really scary to begin with, but once you get your head around it, it's really, it's not that, it's not that scary and it's not that complicated. So these big bits of text, you'll think, oh, my goodness, I'll never be able to read that or translate that. But you will after, after, after you spend a little bit of time trying to get into it. As to which language you should learn, I use MATLAB a lot, but I would advise against that because it's very, very expensive. I just started off using it and then I've never stopped. So that would, so I'd advise you go for one of the open source languages. Python is a really good language. It's quite old now, but it's used a lot by people. And it's used especially for deep learning in acoustic monitoring. So that's a great language to learn. It's got a huge number of libraries. If you're, another possible language would be Julia. And that's a very new language that's coming online now. And the difference between it and Python is that Julia is almost as fast as C, which is one of the fastest programming languages. So it can really speed up your analysis. So that's a potential language that you might want to be learning. The disadvantage is that Julia is very new. So there's much, there's fewer resources than Python, fewer libraries to use. So there's much, there's, there's fewer resources than Python, fewer libraries to use. And then R is absolutely amazing for statistics and something that's used extensively in, certainly in marine mammal science and, and many other sciences as well. So that's also a great language to learn. So I would say those three, but you'll get different opinions from different people.
Thank you, Jamie. That's, that's good advice. And I think, I've got more questions, but I think that we can maybe move those on to answering them on the Hoover platform, if you guys are happy with that. If we look like we're melting here, it's because it's been about, what, 35 degrees outside all day? So, and yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty intense over here. But it has been really, really wonderful to have you guys contribute. And I am hopeful that you guys will stay around for the rest of the conference and interact with our people who have questions. And I think this session has done exactly what we really wanted it to do, which is bring up some issues. And, and I know that the feedback on the free talks has been wonderful and there's been a really good attendance as well. So yeah, just very happy and grateful for your participation in India. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks for organizing.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, with that, we will lob off and we'll switch back to the online platform. And, and we will catch up with everybody tomorrow morning. So thank you, everybody who's been involved today and have a great evening.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
Cool, thanks.